You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the March 21st, 2024 meeting of the Michigan City Commission for Women. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And welcome to Michigan City Commission for Women. Today, we are conducting our meeting or agenda for March 21st, 2024 at 5:30 a, uh, 5:30 PM. I was gonna say AM. So I did hand out the agenda, ladies, everyone, okay? So first thing on the agenda is call to order, which I just did, and roll call is next. Lori, can you conduct the roll call?
I can.
Thank you.
So Jacqueline Jones is here, Linda Conley, Lori Wink is here, Shar Lipsey.
Me, here.
Angela Carter.
Here.
Keisha Ward.
Here.
Kiana Edwards. Can I say?
No.
And Sarah Jones is here.
Present.
Okay.
And for the record, everyone, Linda wanted me to let you all know that she wasn't able to attend today due to another event that she had to attend, okay? All right, so can we read the minutes? The next is the approval for the minutes, and if the minutes can be read.
Oh, you want me to read the minutes?
Sure, thank you, Lori.
Okay, this is the minutes of Thursday, February 15th. We met here. Called to order President Christina Isbell called the meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Attendance Christina Isbell, Linda Conley, Lori Wink, Sarah Jones, Fay Moore, Jackie Jones, Kiana Edwards, Keisha Ward, Angela Carter, and Nyla Williams. Introduction of new commissioners Jackie Jones and Nyla Williams, mayoral appointees, Keisha Ward, Minority Health Partners Appointee, Kiana Edwards, NAACP, Angela Carter. I have Michigan City Councils, and you're saying mayor, so I think we have a little discrepancy there. You are the mayor appointment, okay? Commission appointee, the commission appointee Charlene Lipsey was veteran and is the new commission appointee and treasurer. Overview of the commission. Outgoing President Christina Isbell gave members an overview of the commission ordinance, previous commission events, promotional brochures, fundraising activities, and grants awarded by the commission. Election of 2024 officers Jackie Jones, President Linda Conley, Vice President Lori Wink, Secretary Charlene Lipsey, Treasurer. Minutes for December 23rd, I mean, 2020, 2023 approved. Treasurers' report in absence of the treasurer Christina reported a balance of $15,103. May 8th International Women's Day Lori handed out flyers for the Inspire Inclusion through Entrepreneurship and Empowerment. Linda, Lori, Fay, and Christina are on the subcommittee planning the event. Linda suggested adding a reservation deadline of March 1st to the flyer to discourage walk-ins. Sarah will create the event program and handle the icebreaker. Jackie will be the MC, and Lori will moderate the panel discussion. Fay will coordinate the goodie bags. Commissioners will begin event setup at 9:00 AM. Sarah, Nyla, and Keisha volunteered to invite participation by AK Smith Center, Career Center, Sandcastle Shelter, and Stepping Stones. City Council Liaison comments Daisy Lee has been selected. Commissioners comments Linda encouraged commissioners to attend the 2024 Power Breakfast hosted by the Economic Development Corporation, Michigan City from 7:30 to 10:00 AM Wednesday, March 27th at Uptown Art Center. Panel discussion will feature real estate and construction news and the latest on the 11th Street Station renovations. Meeting adjourned at 6:30. Next meeting date, March 21st, 2024 at 5:30.
Thank you, Lori.
I have one correction. We've got Charlene's name with a C and an S in there.
Right, it's S, yeah. And then also, I guess we need to change.
Yes.
The appointment of Angie, Angela.
Yes.
Mayoral appointment. I'll change that on the roster here, too.
That's correct, though?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other corrections?
I see two, the two that you both mentioned. Any other corrections? Okay, can we have a motion to roll the amendments?
I make a motion to approve the February minutes.
Yes.
One second.
Okay, so we have a second motion by Shar, Charlene, and we also have the second by Nyla. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, okay.
And I will amend it and then send it to the City Hall folks, the whole list of people it goes to.
All right, thank you, Lori. Okay, now we will have the treasurer's report.
All right, so the treasurer's report, I passed it out to everyone. We started with a balance of, last report I think you had was in Janu, official report you had was January with a balance of $15,103. I met with Bonnie on Monday just to get all the treasury, all the treasurer papers and stuff back, and she had advised that there had been no disbursements for this year. I have requested from our Controller's Office a quarterly general ledger, which I should have in the next couple of days, and then no income coming in, so that leaves our balance with $15,103. Now, I have a typo. If you'll notice, I added four cents to the balance today, which is incorrect. It should be a zero. And that's the treasurer's report.
And move that we accept the treasurer's report.
Do we have a second, or someone can second?
I'll second.
You'll second?
I'll second.
Okay, and Angela is seconding the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you for the treasurer's report. Next on the agenda is the training for Michigan City Commission for Women. I was informed that we may be, that there may be a possible training for us or for all the commissioners, but I haven't confirmed that yet, so maybe we can put that under the unfinished business for the next meeting. I am planning on meeting with Mayor Angie to discuss that, to see if it's going to be one provided for the commissioners, and I will try to obtain that date for you all and the time and the place, okay? All right, so we'll have to come back with that next, at the next meeting. Or if it's prior, if it's a date given prior to our meeting, I'll make certain that I email everyone and that they'll have received that information, okay? All right, so I was asked about copies maybe for Robert Rules of Order. A couple had saw that I had a book. I have a couple of copies or some copies that I could share with everyone. It's not like the whole book for Robert Rules of Order, but it's maybe some terminology or something that can be used or whatnot if motions need to occur or whatnot. You're welcome to some of the examples, and then the Robert Rules of Orders that I have is basically dated 2012, so it's not really updated, you know? My understanding of Robert Rules of Order has been updated, so right now I just provide it, just some terminology here, okay? And you all are welcome to it. I know a lot of you all are on boards as it is, so just let you have that. And then I also, the Commission for Women ordinance, do you all have these or a copy of them? I can share, I made copies, and I would love to share these with you all as well.
Is that what's online?
Yes, sometimes some may want hard copies, so. And then also, I will also check and do some research into some other available trainings that may be offered, okay? And if you all have any request or interest in anything pertaining to training, please let me know, and I can forward that information, okay? All right.
Jackie?
Yes.
What did you, what did you just say about available training and miss that?
For available training, I was stating that I would do some researching if there's any trainings that's offered that would benefit us, and also if you all have any trainings in mind or something that come across that you may be interested in, you know, I could forward that information and see what we could, what could happen for us, okay? All right. Unfinished business, March 8th International Women's Day, Inspiring Inclusion wrap-up. So that was awesome. That was amazing. And Lori, and Linda, Christina, Fay, and Ms. Albatina, I believe, am I, and Sarah, I'm sorry. Sarah, they were the subcommittee. That was the subcommittee that hosted, actually organized and did all of the planning before the new commissioners came on board, and Lori, and Sarah, and who else did I say? Linda, Fay, Ms. Fay, and Ms. Albatina, and Christina.
Albertine wasn't really on the committee, but.
Okay, they were partners, though, right? Partnership?
Minority with the minority.
Yeah, it was the minority health, yeah.
Okay, okay, but I just wanted to acknowledge you all for all the hard work that you all accomplished, the dedication, the commitment. I mean, you really, you really did an outstanding job. It was, it was very nice. I had a lot of feedback, positive feedback. I didn't have anything negative that, the feedback, if it was like a concern, it's not like, it can't, you know, be worked out for next year. It was like minor, minor things. It was my understanding, the sign-up sheet was 123 attendees, attendees, but every lunch, it was 150 lunches provided, so every lunch was taken. My understanding, they ran out of food, so everyone didn't receive a lunch. But again, it can be some revisions for next year, and that's good. You know, whatever we see, you know, saw that happened, this previous one, you know, move forward and try to do a little bit, you know, better changes or whatnot, but I mean, it was very nice. A lot of feedback regarding the amount of individuals that was there. Yes, it was crowded, but they were like, it was a nice outcome, a nice amount of people. I am glad that Mayor Angie was there, and she also recognized that we would need a larger space for next year. So we do know that that will be an event that will be on the calendar to continue for next year. We have a couple that are already committed to the subcommittee. I know Linda Conley is one, that she will sit on that, that one, and also Angela Carter will be sitting on that one, and then we will need three other, other ones to also sit on that subcommittee. But does anyone else have any feedback regarding the International Women's? Oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, and thank you, Daisy. Daisy brought a lot of youth, I mean, a lot of youth, and that's what's needed, especially for this generation. We want to include the youth, and thank you, Daisy. I think, how many did you have? 10?
10, yeah.
10. Yeah, room for many more next year.
It was hard to choose only 10. I only, it got to the point where I was like, all right, eighth graders, I'm only gonna take seventh graders, good, you know? But they had a wonderful time, and it is, it's great exposure for them. The women there were so generous and kind and going up to the girls and talking to them and introducing themselves, and the girls were open to conversation. I think they learned a lot from it, and to meet people, professional women in the community who are doing great things, it's inspirational for them, so they can see that great things are happening in our city, and it's not just outside. So hopefully we can, you know, keep some of those girls back here and get them involved more in the city. Thank you for letting me bring some of them. I'm happy to always bring kids with me wherever, so.
Thank you.
There's a bet, and there's an option to bring students. I will, I'll always bring them.
And, you know, I observed maybe a couple gave feedback at the end when it was the Q&amp;A. A couple had given responses and even asked questions for the panelists, so.
Yeah.
And that was great to see. That was, so, thank you so much, and next year, let's look into increasing the number from 10 to maybe, increasing that number from 10, we'll go from there. Sorry about that, thought it was off. Any other comments or feedback regarding the International Women's Day? Anything that you all would like to see different, or? Yes. Nyla, would you, would you like to?
Well, I was at the front desk, so I was doing the registration. I think, you know, for next year, we probably can look at how we can do that a little bit differently, because the line was getting kind of congested in that space. There were a lot of people who came that were not on the list, so hence is probably why the lunches were, you know, you know, short there, but I think we need to really stress that, you know, if you're supposed to RSVP, then we need to stick to that.
And unfortunately, some people are always gonna show up.
Then what are we gonna do when that happens? We need to, I'm sorry, you know?
Right.
We have to stick with that, because you just have all these walk-ins, and of course, we'll leave those openings for, you know, City Council folks and, you know, in the public sector, so, you know, leave it open for them, but as far as just other people saying, well, I'm here with this person, or, but you're not on here, and I found that to be, it was quite a few. And maybe how we have it printed out next time. There were a lot of duplicate hits and things like that, but that's something that we could definitely work on, make it bigger for us to see, because the writing was so small.
I think that's a role in itself, because Christina was the one that handled MailChimp and also kept a suppress of how many had been registered, so that should be a role within the subcommittee, because she handled a lot of that.
Yeah.
Did you, so we could definitely work on that?
We, that's it. I don't know if we have considered Eventbrite or some other form of registration, way to RSVP or registration that would generate a report for us and help us track better.
Yeah, I don't know.
For the gala, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I don't, I don't think we use Eventbrite at the gala. That was the first time we'd used MailChimp. But if we're looking at, of course, this as an annual event, and then the Women's Equity Day, we probably should explore what it would, if there's any cost or what it would take to be able to register via.
We could even do like, you can, if you RSVP, then like, when they sign in, if you've RSVP doing like a ticket to redeem the lunch, that way those who didn't RSVP can still participate in the material that's provided, but may not necessarily give.
That's what I was trying to add, that if you don't RSVP, maybe that could just be a part of the registration. You won't, you won't be, lunch won't be provided without an RSVP.
Yeah, so then you'll have, we definitely would need to have a larger space. Because you'll have, you know, that overflow of people just wanting to come or just showing up, so, yeah, for next year, I'm sorry, Memorial Park, but we've outgrown that space.
Right, and we will, we will have a larger venue for next year. We'll have a larger venue. And the subcommittee, the ones that's gonna be working on that one, you know, those changes can be discussed within the subcommittee. So again, what, what I experienced, it was like an odd moment, it was really nice. The panelists, the discussions, so everything was good, the food was good, even with the food, we were gonna have plenty of other events as well. She did a nice, a very nice job. Kia Backyard is it called? Kia Can Cook. I think it's Kia Can Cook. She, it was nice, the lunches were nice, but we also have to remember, too, I think my motto is, everyone has an opportunity, everyone has a voice, everyone, don't, you know, leave anyone out, so we have to also remember, too, that as other caterers in Michigan City area, La Porte County area, that maybe we can rotate and also introduce them and bring them in, too, to maybe be able to cater sometimes as well.
That's promoting, you know, small businesses that is, you know, Michigan City, so that would be nice to show, you know, the variety of, you know, the caterers or other businesses if we need some other things done, always look into, you know, not just have one person or one caterer, but open it up to, to all.
So a little unfinished business we do have with Kia Can Cook.
Yes.
Is that there were additional, 50 more lunches added to our initial order, and so that came to $500. And I, Christina and Nor Bonnie were sure if we had voted on or had agreed or voted to reimburse the caterer with that, so we should look to take a vote tonight to approve that $500 so that we can wrap that up with the caterer.
Yes.
And move that we pay an additional $500 to Kia Can Cook for the additional lunches for that event?
Can we have a second?
A second?
Anyone opposed or have any questions?
Okay. The, yes, everybody, did everybody vote, or we're voting? We have to vote.
Yeah. Yes, 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 I'm calling the vote.
I asked for, for, well, I'm sorry. Lori made the motion.
I seconded.
And you seconded, and can we call for a vote? So roll, do we?
All in favor, aye.
All in favor, aye, okay. Anyone opposed?
No.
No? Okay, so the, the vote is that we will pay the additional $500 to Nokia.
Okay, I'll take care of getting that accomplished.
And also, so you all would know, but I don't have that handout, so that would have to come at, we would have to bring that back up at the next visit, is reimbursements. And the reimbursements, I know Christina, she submitted some receipts to be reimbursed, okay? And I don't have those numbers right here in front of me.
Okay.
But do you have, did she?
I don't believe so, but I can reach out to her.
Okay, I have, I think I have a copy.
Okay.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, the only thing I was saying is, the next meeting, I will make certain that I have those receipts, copies of the receipts, so Christina and whoever else needs to be reimbursed for their donate, well, the donation or whatever amount that they contributed to the March 8th International Women's Day be reimbursed, okay? So that'll be under the unfinished business on the next agenda. I'm sorry.
Do you have the exact total of participants for the event?
Well, according to the sign-up sheet, when everyone signed in, we only had 123. But however, according to the lunches, it was, all of them were gone, so, and some didn't receive a lunch. So we really don't know actually how many. We know that it wasn't a available seat in there, and that was set up for 150.
It's good to know it's popular.
Yes. I think that was a good idea.
Free lunch, it brings people.
It, it does.
Food? Food? No. Food, entertainment?
Yes, food and entertainment, but you know, I think it was a great idea for like recommending each one of us, invite 10 people, and that's what happened, but then after that, then I guess others just started, when they heard about it, word of mouth, and they started RSVPing after we went out and invited them. Yeah, so, but again.
This was announced at the City Council meeting, someone who came and hadn't registered told me that.
Really?
Yeah, I was trying to say, hmm, we don't know if we can let you in. She found, she, she got in through Denise, she pulled rank, so, but the person said, yeah, I heard it at the City Council meeting, and I, they said the time, they didn't say you had to register, so I don't know how it was announced at the City Council meeting, but that was the.
It was an invitation, and we, we wanted to invite the City Council there, so we did extend an invitation, and we appreciate them coming, even the president of the City.
This was somebody in the audience, so.
Okay, so again, it's always room for changes, and again, I, I'm not gonna say anything was really negative, we can always, we always have room for improvement, so we'll know what to do next year, okay? All right, so again, under the unfinished business for next meeting, we will provide the copies for the reimbursements, surveys. I only received 16 from 123 individuals that, well, according to the registration sheet, but again, we have, we know that every seat in there was taken, which was 150, I only received 16 surveys. So maybe that's another thing that can be looked at next year, is how can we get these surveys back, you know? So, but with the surveys, the ones that I did review, a lot of them stated that they would like to see like the middle-aged youth involved, include them. The seniors, the elders, what's available for the seniors or the elders, finance, it was surveys regarding finance. I know council, councilwoman, am I pronouncing it right? Councilwoman Tracy Tillman, she had stated that she works with the Prosecutor's Child Division, the Advocate for Child Division, and a lot don't know about that division, which she would love to come in and, you know, talk about that. So finance was one, youth, and the older, elder generation, I wanted to say elder generation, that, what else was one, I'm sorry?
I do have a question, were they specific around the finance part of it, or?
I think it was more like education, being educated, or someone from Horizon Bank, matter of fact, yes, they wanted to be included, you know, to provide education with finances, so that was one, too. And then also, I know it was some verbal responses, and, but they're not here, like Ms. Linda's not here to, you know, provide that information, but can any of you all share anything that you heard verbally regarding feedback?
Couple people at my table, they just told me that they were enjoying themselves and that they liked the food, that the food was very fresh. They were just, I mean, they just enjoyed themselves, and they made mention of it.
Okay.
Nothing beyond that.
Okay, nothing of something that they would wanna see us work towards, or did anyone receive any?
Nyla? Just overall, everyone enjoyed themselves.
Okay.
They were so glad that was their first time ever coming. They were so glad that was their first time ever coming.
Okay.
So they really was like so happy that they, you know, got a chance to be there. Um, overall, it was just very nice, very nice. All good comments.
I've heard a lot of just, you know, they enjoyed themselves, educational. Um, outside of being there, it was just seeing them, the people who made the comments. Um, outside of the luncheon, so they, you know, made a point, like they enjoyed themselves. It was a nice event. My daughter was there with Daisy. And teenagers are hard to please sometimes. And she said she had, she had a good time and she thought it was interesting. I was like, oh.
True.
And I um.
I did, I remembered. I did have one comment in particular where a lady told me, I wish I'd had time to network. So that that made me wonder, like, should we be adding a piece to that? Should we open the doors and give thirty minutes of, where people can just network before the speakers, before the eating? You know, but she she did mention that.
Okay.
And she was like, and man, I'm so glad to be here, but it's too tight for me to move around and like that. But she she loves it.
It was tight for sure.
But she did enjoy it and she told me, I wish I could network. I was, you know, she was looking at some people that she was like, I would love to get over there. You know, so.
I was gonna also say when we were, um, we brought the children in or the teenagers in. I was trying to put them all in one area together so they can feel, you know, supported. So we was trying to squeeze them in that little corner. And they didn't wanna go over to the other table because they had a table in between there. So we modified that by bringing other chairs over. And I think they really appreciated that. So they can feel, you know, be with each other.
Our jerkery of having maybe a designated.
Yes.
So that they feel they are comfortable.
Like you have the president or you have the vice presidents, like, I know we sit there, there's our table. So I said, no, we're gonna squeeze you in. So we got them in and they really liked it.
They're small.
Yeah, they're small.
Also, I think that networking time is valuable because not everyone likes speaking in front of or asking questions in front of that many people. So maybe having something on a smaller scale level where there's maybe some more comfort in. There might have been a lot of questions that didn't get asked because someone didn't wanna speak out in front of everybody.
Okay. Very nice.
Um, also, I wanna acknowledge Minority Health Coalition, is it?
Partners.
Partner, yes. Um, because they partnered with um this event. And actually, I believe they paid for half, if I'm not mistaken. So thank you um for Minority Health Coalition and um their contribu- uh contribution and every, um, all that they contributed to for this event. So really appreciate that. And I didn't want it to go unnoticed.
As far as the survey feedback, um, next year, if you all are interested, I'd be happy to create a QR code that people can scan at their tables so that they can give the survey feedback on their phones, even outside. I know me, I got the paper. And then we were leaving and it was chaotic and then I forgot to fill it out. So if there was a QR code, I could have scanned it and then, you know, take it home with me and fill it out then. So we might get more responses.
I was actually having that in the back of my mind, having it digitally. For some of us that prefer the digital, I'll take a paper home. And I can't tell you where it's at most of the time, but if it's on digital, I can find it. And then I'll remember to turn it in or submit it that way.
You actually got that when we were at the coffee shop. Christina gave it to you. It's on the top of the paper. I mentioned that because me and Lori was talking about um getting a QR code. And she says, um, how would we do that? You have to get all the information in there. So it was on the top of your paper. Um, we were at the coffee shop and Christina's there.
For me to implement it? For me to implement?
No, just to let you see that that would be a good additive.
Okay, okay.
Projects. Yeah, a lot of people, you know, with the phone, it can get all the information right there.
Yeah.
Especially elderly. I was concerned about them as well.
Yes, yes, they don't. And then that's something to keep in mind too, because um some may not be able, you know, like like technology.
Yes, they may not want to do it.
Right, so we have to find a way.
Those who do, yeah.
Yes. So maybe we can come up with a couple of options to, you know, that everybody would be comfortable with. But thank you for that. Cause I was thinking, I was like, QR, um, code, okay. Um, thank you for that. Um, so speaking of QR code, um, under the subcommittee roles, that's what it's, that's where we're at now. Um, and I know we're jumping down, well, I'm jumping down to C since we're talking about QR codes or whatnot. Would anybody be interested? Because we're going to have to uh implement some.
So I do um work on the Facebook page. I do have access to that. I can put as much on or as little on as is asked of me.
So.
If somebody else wants to help out with that, that's fine. But um, I don't mind helping out in that way with the Facebook page. If you want something else, I can.
So can we point, appoint you as the social media point person? Okay. And um, can we have a backup? A backup person? Cause you never know. I always like to have a backup or emergency person. Would you like to work along with the QR?
I would love to, but I'm gonna be honest, I will probably not.
Okay.
She should be able to puzzle.
Right.
I don't think she's.
Yeah. No, 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 I was saying, um, helping out like with the QR code or something, because you had.
QR codes, yeah.
Okay.
QR posse for sure, yeah.
That'd be nice. That's what I was at. Cause I know that your schedule is busy. So I understand. Yes, so.
I can be backup for Sarah. And a lot of the times, just.
Thank you.
I won't post something unless you say, hey, put this on Facebook. Just, I don't know how much you want on and how much. If there's anything that you feel should be on that, so that I can put it on there.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Charlene. Um, I'm also gonna jump down to legislative reports. I'm not certain if anyone on um the commission's board here is interested or has expertise or just like to research. Because I think that that's gonna be important too, to make certain that we have those numbers and see what the concern is and, you know, just stay up on information. So would anyone like to take that role?
Locally or state or nationally?
In in general. I was told in general.
Um, I'm an avid news junkie, so I can take point on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlene.
I'm sorry, what were you saying?
I'm not a good person.
Okay, so Charlene would be the point person for the legislative reports, local and nationwide?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I, well, I'll just give you the example. I was reading earlier this week a report that the number of women entrepreneurs has exploded following the pandemic. And that includes women running their own businesses in what were predominantly men's roles or men's um businesses before. So I, I was thinking, you know, something along that lines, that's good information to have.
Right.
Um, there's gonna be a huge amount of wealth transfer to women uh over the next decade. And so I look at those things, I think those are things that might be of interest for us as a women's commission. And then, of course, there's the legislative things that are happening that um impact us as well.
Very good.
Yes. Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay, we already had, we're gonna go back to A now, since we have those two, those were two important roles that we needed to fill. Um, August the twenty-sixth, that's another um event that we will be hosting Women's Equality Day. And um, it, what was, well, it wasn't actually hosted last year, but what took place was uh, we submitted or a resolution was submitted and the council approved it. And that was read at the council meeting on, when was that, Tuesday? It was read. So it was a resolution that occurred instead of an actual program. But this year, it will be an actual program. And my understanding is like a, is it a gala or something that takes place?
It's an event to be determined. We're doing it with the legal women voters. And the legal women voters are up on the commission, so.
Okay. Um, yes, Lori is one of the representatives and also Kiana Edwards is. Um, Kiana stated. Yeah, Kiana Edwards has stated that she's also works with the League of Women Voters. And she's also agreed to work on this event. Um, so right now, we have Lori and Kiana and Nyla. Nyla's interested in working on it as well. Um, Sarah, um, anybody else before I move to Sarah to ask Sarah, would you work on that? Because, or would you like to, or you just wanna remain as just separate, making certain that the media goes out and different things like that? But it doesn't necessarily.
That's a tough one, just because of the date.
Okay.
Um, I I am more than happy to help with things like the programs, paper type things, just.
Okay.
That's the start of school. So that's always a hard one for me.
Okay. And the only reason that I was asking you is based on the social media, but if you could still, if you would.
Yeah, I can still help out.
With the media.
But like, subcommittee meetings, because if they're scheduled during the day, they're really hard for me to attend.
I'm a writer and public relations person. I'd be happy to do the public relations media release. I mean, that's what I do.
Okay.
So are we, are we looking to sell tickets or admission to help cover costs for this?
I think we need to, we need to work on the subcommittee. I don't think we're ready to, we're just gathering our peeps, so.
Okay.
And we're gonna work with the legal women voters.
Right. And I plan on making contact with um a couple. I'll give you their names, actually. I wrote it. Let me see. One is um Linda, Linda Lancaster.
Yeah, I think the subcommittees bring to the commission the ideas for it. That's why we have subcommittees, yeah.
Right. Um, so, I'm sorry, what I was saying is I'm gonna reach out um to Linda Lancaster and also Joanne Inquist. They're also on the Legal Women's Voters and um talk with them as well. But yes, the subcommittee, um, they have to, they're gonna be planning, doing majority of the planning or whatnot, so.
So I will blend on, I volunteer for that as well, since I'm treasurer.
Great, okay.
And.
Awesome.
Good.
Okay, so so far we have Kiana, we have Nyla.
Yes.
Uh, the date is on a Monday?
I was just curious.
Is it a Monday?
It's a Monday. So I was wondering, is that?
We could alter that.
It's not a change.
Okay.
Yeah.
The twenty-sixth is just the actual.
It's the official.
Official date.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Yeah, we can pick a better date. Wednesday's probably not a good one.
So Nyla, Kiana, um, Charlene.
Yep.
And Lori. Okay.
And if they have a subcommittee, like programs or whatnot, they can throw.
Yes, if you could still, because you're the role.
What you do.
We're, um, you're the role for social media point person. So yes, if they can still provide you with the information and whether you put it on Facebook or however you do.
I agree with that.
Thank you. Alright, so we have that one. Okay, and then also, um, I'm gonna ask you, Charlene, and I don't wanna put everything on you, but as the treasurer, do you mind sitting on some other subcommittees?
No.
As well. Okay, cause I think that that would be a good idea to have the treasurer on there. But um, for the luncheon next year, uh, Linda, for the um international luncheon, for that subcommittee, Linda's still going to be sitting on that one. So she already has stated that. And I believe Angela, right, Angela? And Keela, would you like to sit on that one as well? Okay, so we have Keela, Angela, and Linda, and Charlene.
Keisha.
I mean, Keisha. I am so sorry. Keisha. Sorry, Keisha. I'll get it right. Angela, Keisha, Linda, and Charlene.
I can.
For the luncheon too. Okay. So we have Angela, Keisha, Linda, Charlene, and Nyla for the luncheon, subcommittee, international for next year.
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five. Okay. Okay. Um, the new program ideas, we're still kinda creating them, generating them a little bit. I do want to, um, if we would consider looking into, um, I know health, I don't know if I mentioned that on the surveys. It did state, some have stated more health education. And also, I think I read one with um resources, some type of community resources. And that's one of my things too. I think that um the community should be educated on what uh resources are available for them, you know, out in the community, regardless if it's youth, um, uh, the younger generation or the mid-age or the seniors. Everyone should know what's available for them. And sometimes, you know, when individuals um come in a bind, you know, um, not able to pay rental or, you know, utilities or even medical, things that, places that they can go to receive medical assistance, things of that nature. Um, how we would implement those programs yet, I don't know. But some programs just need to be um kinda created. And that's where we come in with some creative ideas. Okay? Especially um geared towards the youth as well, because we see that interest, okay?
Talked about in the past, compiling resources from the community into one
pamphlet.
Sheet, pamphlet, whatever have you.
Oh, okay.
Never got kind of going or finished per se. Um, I can see what, cause I know I started something, a document.
Kinda like the four one one?
Pretty much, just because some resources, like one, um, one place might have these resources listed and another place would have these resources listed, but they're not the same resources. And you'd need like five or six different papers to see what you might be able to utilize and just kind of combining from what we could find in the community, see if are the actual resources that are still valid. Cause some places, like I looked into, were no longer accessible. Um, so I'm not sure where that went, but.
Okay.
It's been brought up in the.
Right, that'd be nice. That would be nice. And then also, I forgot too, I'm sorry ladies. Um, another concern that was mentioned was insurance. I guess a lot of things are taking place, a lot of complaints about insurance. Um, new, I don't wanna say insurance providers, maybe it is, but it's a change. And a lot of the elders or seniors are very confused of what insurance to accept, um, what they're being declined of. I know with um some waivers, I believe they call them, um, for home-based services and things of that nature. Um, the government, I guess, is um, um, they had, what can I say? They kinda got away or they're getting away from some of the um programs. Like it was structured family care. I think that was a big thing now that um they're not willing to pay mothers to provide care for the child in the home and um things like that regarding health. So I don't know if you heard of anything like that, Keisha, anything coming your way?
Cuts in medic- Medicare, I think it is.
Okay.
So there, because there had been so so many changes since COVID. It was like they were readjusting everything. Um, I say as to not help so many people. So they've kind of readjusted things and have tightened down on some people. So some people are actually not having it the same uh capacity. They don't have the same amount of benefits anymore.
Right. And I know another concern too was the transportation, getting them to the medical, um, different medical appointments or whatnot. Um, it's hard to find that transportation. I think that they were cutting back on that too. It used to be under home community assistance or something, home-based, some type, you know, the home-based services.
Yeah.
Yes, and um they're cutting back with that, that only one service or one provider can provide that transportation if they were under a waiver. But um, I mean, it's needed. Medical transportation is needed. And it's a lot they can't afford to pay out of pocket to be transported to medical appointments. So that's something too that we can think about, you know. But I definitely agree with you regarding the community resources.
I did find what we started, so I can share that.
Okay.
Very incomplete. Very incomplete, but it's a start.
Okay, so Angie said that that's something that we can do.
I have the start, so I'll share it with.
Things change so much, um, you know, trying to keep up with, like you said, the health thing, I mean, I have to, because that's part of my job. Um, and I've been in this field for a long time, so I'm up to date on, you know, those issues. You know, with Medicaid, Medicare, um, people actually getting on hip two-point-oh, things like that. Um, but every Medicaid, um, provider provides the transportation, a lot of people just don't understand. And read the insurance documents. People lose their insurance because they don't understand the paperwork, and having to fax in certain things like that, so I. It is a huge piece just about educating on health overall. Um, and health insurance, that's, that could just be one seminar we could do, you know, and then. You know, then other health issues that are affecting, um, you know, folks here in Michigan City or LaPorte County as a whole. And we can always touch on those higher, um, percentage, um, chronic illnesses. Because there's, there's. Yes, it's serious, and our youth, okay, since y'all, the youth people here. Just to give you a heads up, diabetes with the youth, it is, is at an uptick right now. Kids should not be getting diabetes, okay? So, you know, these are some things, or program ideas, or community resource type of ideas, or seminars and things that we could definitely hit on. So we can always talk about, you know, what is, um, the most important thing. Maybe have a list of some stuff, and then we can always say, okay, yeah, we wanna tackle this, or, you know. But I'm off with the health stuff, so.
Insurance in general, like. Private insurance.
Yes, the market.
Understand what's.
It is hard, and I was a navigator for about seven years. So I understand that, but, and it was hard for me. Yeah, but I was trained on it and doing it for so long, so just imagine, when you don't have that background in it. And you're getting this paper, and you're like, what is this? I don't understand it, so they don't send it in, and they lose their coverage.
The negotiators are putting it at the time of the Obamacare, right?
So I, I was doing it all those years. Yeah, it's.
It's a new world.
It is, sure, but educating, you know, folks on there, no one should be without, you know, in insurance.
That private insurance, even those, like, like, I don't understand half of my insurance paperwork. And so I don't necessarily utilize what I could, so.
But you could, that's right.
Could be even just anyone, like, that just doesn't understand, and they're afraid to go in because they don't know what it's gonna cost, or.
Right, even though it could be covered and they have no idea, so.
I think that that's.
We need to do that.
That would be under, so actually, we're envy now, the new program ideas, so one of the new program ideas that we can look into is health, you know, maybe having some seminars, or even if it's luncheons or whatnot, to bring individuals out, um, to discuss or educate them on the youth concerns for health, and also, um, the elder, or educate even when, when it comes to insurance. Um, maybe another, although we're, um, generating a manual, I must say, for community resources. So if we're gonna take on that project, maybe we can, um, kinda form a a, uh, program or something like that around that as well, to introduce individuals, or have a speaker come in, and even talk about what's available here in LaPorte County.
I don't know about. That's just my personal. Because things change. So, so much, and you invest that money to do with this booklet.
It's obsolete as soon as you put it together.
You know, and then that, that company or that is just, is off the table, and then you're trying to keep it up to date and keep adding to it. What we need to do is, um, get with United Way or the two-one-one, and make sure that is updated. To have everything, um, you know, to see if that's updated, but that is probably your best thing to go to for right now, is to go to two-one-one, um, and get the most updated information. But to do a booklet or something, what community resources, it's. Yeah, it's difficult.
And I am familiar with the two-one-one, so, um, but, okay. We'll look into that, we can always table that and come back to that, you know? Keisha, regarding Minority Health Coalition or whatnot, what are some of the things that minority?
Diabetes, like she said, that's one of the things that we do. That we educate, um, different places in the community about diabetes, or disease, obesity, um, cancer. Uh, infant mortality, and even mental health, those are the things that, those, that's our thrust. So that, that's what we do, we go out and educate. Especially our community about those issues, and like she even mentioned, Nyla even mentioned about youth having diabetes, that's just off the church, so. That's something that when we have certain programs, you know, we talk to kids about, especially kids, because it's good to get people while they're young, talk to them about, you can't have all Twinkies all the time, all Pepsi all the time. You know, and it's that, and it's that very thing that sends your blood sugar up and all that kinda stuff early in life. And so if you, if your foundation is the vending machine, chances are, before you're twenty, it's, it's very likely that you'll be a diabetic, so I wasn't surprised when you said that, it's like. It's terrible, but those are some of the things, um, that we do, similar to what Nyla does in, in a lot of ways, but. It's just, I hate to hear that, even though we do this work, it's like, it can be discouraging. But you know, but you have to, but you do have to get out there and, you know.
March eighth event did do quite a bit of comprehensive stuff about health in the community. I don't remember the particulars, cuz I wasn't on the planning committee then, or the commission, but it was, there were a lot of speakers and.
It was the focus.
It was the focus last year of the commission.
Honing in on, on those key areas and talking to them at their level, whether it's kids, and so they can understand. You know, not just sitting up here and we're, we're speaking, and they don't have a chance to really engage and really understand it. I think that hands-on approach would be the best way to try to do some of these things, even with the insurance piece. Um, not just to talk about the insurance and have a Q and A of it, but actually have those MCEs, which is the managed care entities, so it's Anthem, CareSource, et cetera, et cetera, have them actually there, and maybe even like CKF there to actually help people apply on the spot. To walk them through it, tell them to bring their paperwork in, so we're actually making a difference, and not just talking. They're leaving there with, they got coverage now. They understand what, what their insurance is, or what this paperwork is. I wanna do more of that type of stuff.
Thank you for all of that feedback. Now, Angie, I'm coming to you now. I know Angela shared with me earlier about, um, some of the feedback from even our senior. The seniors community, I must say, um, the concerns or what they would like to see, or how they wanna be included. You wanna share, Angie?
Um, yes, I've talked to a few of them, and they do feel like they're being pushed back. Um, I don't know if it's because, um, they're living at home by themselves, I don't know, but they're seeing that we need we have the resources where, um, they can add to the, um, to the, to Michigan City and LaPorte area. Um, if you put the elderly and the young ones together, some kinda way of bringing that gap. They can teach them more things than they can ever just getting a piece here and there, so their concern is they're not being looked up on as being part of the community, you know, it's not just, uh, not getting the resources. Cuz I usually, when I go around, I'm usually talking to a lot of the women or, and their husbands that may have lost their husbands, and they don't know what to do next. How do I get, you know, the checks, or how do I get things going? So, um, they would like to participate, maybe getting a, start a new, um. I don't know, just get a meeting with them to get their feedback, to see, maybe I can go and talk, or kinda knock around and see exactly. So I talked about twinning the last maybe, hmm, three months, and they would like to participate. And whatever, to keep them busy too. See, they're so out of the loop, like you said, we were talking about the Medicaid, I had an aunt, and she lost everything, and uh, she couldn't get her basic medicine, so she didn't know if I'm gonna eat this week, or am I gonna get my medicine? She went to CVS, and I told her, listen, we'll go to Walmart, it has four dollars for thirty days or ninety days, depends on what it is, and it's ninety day, ninety pills for, so I'm trying to help her to see, but if you don't have a way of getting there, or, so I pick them up, I'll take them. I've spent, been doing this for years, and so they would like to, um, if we can get them together, get some names, things like that. I was even thinking about getting a bus or something to pick them up, and just take them and bring them, and let them tell you their concerns, so, yeah, if they can get, um. Maybe we can bring, um, as you was talking to me earlier.
Some type of luncheon or something.
That would be really nice.
A program, something, a seminar.
Yeah, so they can, they can participate. And add to, uh, and add to us too.
When you say, no one left behind, Jackie?
No one left behind, yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, so we've got a lot of ideas on the table, and, um, all age groups covered. So to speak, and I, I just got to thinking about, um, I've heard youth mentioned a lot. And of course, our, um, older citizens. Something triggered for me with, um, Angie, the mayor's upcoming charitable ball with an emphasis toward youth. And, and, um, and I'm, I'm wondering, you said you're gonna be meeting with the mayor. Is there, um, as we look at, uh, what the mayor's objectives and focus is over the next year or two, is there an opportunity that we have as a commission to help support and play a role in, um, maybe some of those efforts? So, um, I, I just think about, when you talk about the resources, it almost seems like, um, that was. Did I hear something in the various conversations with the mayor that's providing those? She's really about uniting the community, providing ease and access to all residents. So, is there an opportunity to align some of our programming with what she's focused on?
Yeah, that's what I was planning on doing, and seeing what some of her objectives were, and then, you know, sharing. With, um, the mayor also, where we were, what we're, what our concerns are, what we were talking about, discussing, what our vision is for the commission.
I think he wants to really incorporate the vibrant, um, you know, Michigan City. Yes, and really getting out into the community, bringing more of those programs, not just, it's, you know, it's like, you know. Francisco and Hospital, not taking everything out of the hospital, but take those programs and things like that into the community. So we're on the west side, and we in the east port, or we, you know, so that is, um, part of her. Her goal is to incorporate that more, so we can definitely jump on that.
We could invite the mayor to the commission meeting. Cuz she could address all of us, I think that'd be a good idea.
So I'll share all of these concerns when I meet with her. Well, uh, thank you all for that. So, uh, with the new, I, uh, I'm sorry, with the new program ideas, we'll, um, place that under unfinished business as well. And we can come back to that, um, after we start creating, seeing how we're gonna kinda form some of these, uh, ideas into some programs or whatnot, um, I'm looking into doing maybe some fundraisers. And, um, maybe some grant research and sponsors, so that'd kinda be my area. Um, anyone else can join in with me if they want? Um, trainings and retreats, um, that would be nice, again, we talked earlier about some trainings. But by understanding the previous commission, um, and then Lori also may mention to today that it was actually, she confirmed that it was a, um, a retreat, or some type of retreat, so maybe we can look into that later. Towards, what was it, fall or something?
It was September.
Yeah, and so we met, and then that's how we come up, like, with the focus of what we want to work towards for this, it was this year, but.
Oh, okay.
That's typical every year, right, that there is a retreat.
Yeah, and so we plan out, you know, what are our goals, what, kinda like what you were doing here with the new program ideas. And we really get one concentration, so that's how we came up the year prior to that, in our retreat, we wanted to focus on that health aspect. So during that time, we kinda brainstormed ideas, got some things set, so that we knew kind of where that, you know, what those panels would look like, or what those events would encompass.
Thank you for the clarity, thank you, thank you, thank you, because I wasn't aware of that. I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that, but thank you for the clarity. So, um, maybe we can look in the fall to have a retreat, uh, rather September, October, I don't know. We can all kinda think about a date to do that, and, um, if you all have somewhere in mind, um.
And that usually took the place of that month's meeting as well, so.
All right, thank you for sharing that information, and that's much needed. So maybe in the, um, if you all think of some venues or somewhere like that, that maybe we can go and meet, or have a small little retreat. Was it smaller? Well, we can talk about it another time, something, but. All right, nice, so I wanna be mindful of everyone's, um, schedule. And their time, so we can stop here, um, well, actually, yeah. We've included this part, and we're gonna place some of this under unfinished business, which would be the new program ideas. And we can move forth with the city council liaison comments, Daisy, do you have any?
I don't have any comments, other than I'm really excited to be here with you all. Um, you all do wonderful work, and I'm excited to be a part of that, and let me know however way I can help with whatever you need.
Thank you so much, and thank you for attending. Um, we don't have anyone here from the public, and we all, uh, so all of you all would know that the public is welcome to attend our meetings, so, um, or if you all wanna encourage someone to attend, and I believe we can have speakers at our meetings, is that correct? Our next meeting will be April the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, at the same time. And I just ended the agenda with a quote alone, we can do so little, together, we can do so much. And that's, um, written by Helen Keller. Right, anything else, anyone?
Um, skipped over commissioner comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I actually, uh, had, um, from councilperson Nancy Molenhauer. Just wanted to acknowledge the Women's Commission's presentation last night. Yeah, uh, she mentioned that it was probably one of the best presentations from a commission that she's seen, so just wanted to acknowledge that.
That was Christina.
Christina and Jackie, yeah, um, just wanted to make that, make you guys aware of that.
Thank you.
And then, I guess the other thing I was thinking about is, Daisy, something you said about how much your kids loved uh, the event, and I know the Sustainability Elite Commission has youth commissioners. You have like four youth commissioners.
Six, we had to up it, it was four, and then we had a lot of interest, so we changed the ordinance to six.
So I'm wondering if that's something we think about too, as a women's commission, to, to maybe discuss future of, uh, looking to add some young youth to our commission.
That's a good idea.
And that's my comment, I conclude my comments.
Anyone else?
I had, I'm sorry, I have one more question.
I had, I'm sorry, I have one more question. In, in the treasurer information that Bonnie provided me, she had a really nice summary of the twenty twenty-three finances, showing, showing where all the dollars and things went, and I wasn't sure if that's something she had shared with the commission, like in December or in January. And if not.
That, no.
If that's something you guys would be interested in seeing, 'cause it shows all the reimbursements and all of the grants that were given.
Twenty twenty-three.
In twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, that would be great, yes.
Yeah, so, uh, next meeting, I will bring copies of that for everyone.
Anyone else? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Smooves.
Second. All in favor? Okay, thank you all for, I'm coming out, oh, I thought your hand was ruined.
Oh, no.
Oh, okay, thank you all for coming out, and I really appreciate each and every one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.